Thanks.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the government of the people, with their just for all.
Yes.
Boys and kings. While driving on Glenwood Road, I observed one metal gate with red and white diamond symbols at the gink at West End and Glenwood Road have been left unlocked, so I report the problem to the police right away. The next day I returned to Glenwood Road and I saw that the metal gate at West End, that's Villa Street was locked and I'd like to thank the Manan Police for blocking that metal gate at the West End and Glenwood Road. Well done. Second, now on March 30th, 2022, while driving on Broadway, I observed one metal street light marker number 75 on the east side of Broadway here in Manan, not being lighted up during nighttime. So I reported the problem to the Manan Police Department. So about less than one month later, while driving on Broadway, I as a witness and saw observed that the utility guys from National Grid fix metal street light marker number 75, and I'd like to thank them for doing their job. Well done. Third, during April 4th, 2022, the village board meeting, which is two week, couple weeks ago, I'm glad that our village board members voted to pass the local number 127 make property maintenance code to keep our village of building environment, public safety and foreign codes up to date with New York State Property Code. As I said before, that I do support local number chapter 127 property maintenance code for health, welfare, environment, public safety and equality of life reasons. Fourth, I support DVA lead agency for the proposed cellphone tower at 381 Broadway, which is in the Manan farmers market for welfare, economic, social, public safety and equality of life reasons. I hope at some point in time that our village zoning and pre board of appeals will approve the proposed 381 Broadway cellphone town, which a commercial project needs and should be done, which I understand they're going to have their meeting on May 12th. Now, five, during the April 4th, 2022 village board meeting, while I had listened to the village board members, Seth Harris, read the proposed New York, New Jersey watershed protection of the Hudson River, I agree that New York State, New Jersey Watership Act will provide health, welfare, environment, economic, well recreation, social equality of life benefits to the people and localities along the Hudson River and the branches, Hudson and Mohawk River and our village. So I support the plan, planned watershed protection for the act for several reasons just mentioned about six. While picking up litter on Manan Road and Road and Raro Avenue Junction, I met one village resident, well, actually I met a couple of them on the area, and they expressed their concerns to me about one area on between east side of Villa Road and south side of Manan Road, near the Manan Road, Raro Crossing, it's being cluttered with litter, plus the area is sometimes flooded with water during and after periods of heavy rain, and there's also two brush trees. I meant to put that there, not just one in the area just mentioned above, like where one of the steel high voltage towers is located. And I found out from Don Hanigan that our village public work guys cannot clean up the area between Villa and Manan Roads near the Manan Raro Crossing because that property is owned by Canadian Pacific Railroad, which is private property. So, and I've been told that village officials have tried to get the regional office up to Clifton Park to get its maintenance crew to clean up that area. So what I done was I told Don Hanigan I would write a letter to Mr. Keith Greel, who was President CEO of Canadian Pacific Railroad and other officials. So I, so I may cop wrote, worked on yesterday morning, but I made copies of it. I sent it to his headquarters in Calgary, Alberta, Canada. So I'm, I'm appealing to him that, that he would get, they would get that air crew from Clifton Park to clean up that area that I just mentioned. And don't worry, I done it on my own initiative. I did not do it on behalf of the village. I would not do that without permission. So I've done my best that I could, and I hope you appreciate what I've done so far. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm done.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Just one thing. I presented to court with a copy of the highway and by the way, work permit, which I think village wanted to incorporate into its plans, it encourages the contract is to require it, I think, to get insurance, they follow manual and uniform traffic devices and all the things that you can write in there. User breaks effectively, all mentality, and I think it's a worthwhile thing to.
And they, and they have to pay the permit, there's a cost to permit based on the square, square footage.
Table, this cost per connectivity.
Right.
By the foot, by the yard, by the.
But yeah, we could base it on what the area to be disturbed, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, alright.
And you could also have a consultant come in, check the work and charge the portion.
Right, so if they disturb, you know, anywhere in the right of way, which can include up on the people's, you know, wrongness or they have to put it back the way it was.
The key is the village is insured because last year the people did the gas stains in the south end were like cowboys. They come in, do whatever the hell they wanted and left it there and then come back and fix it. And they had flagmen with the little flags, they had a list, you know, signs looked like they mixed concrete on them, probably did. And those are the kinds of things you want to avoid protections of public. And also they hit you off the hunk because it's on the village right away. Whereas when, you know, you tell them they can do it, then it's yours as well as theirs.
This looks to be from village roads.
Village.
They're not like 324 or a broad, put on one of those.
No, that's their state. They have permission for that. State takes care.
And that's the thing, they have to get permits for new roads and other municipalities have them as well for their, for their roads.
It's just a fair way to protect yourselves, perhaps take the small feet. The idea is insurance is the big aspect of this as to the vision, which you could provide by your village engineer and foreign people. So not hire anybody, go on and watch what they do.
So the people who hit the gas line in the south end, did they have a permit to do that work?
I thought I know. See, they're a sub for not even going, where you get this subdivision, they've got a line, kicks the can down the street. Who's really responsible? You are. It's your property, you let them do it.
Did they restore that road life?
When they finally got to it, yes.
Can you, can we put time restrictions on that as well? For the, for the, for the time that they have to, you know, from the time they do the work.
They have to specify when they start, when they finish. And if you don't like it, you tell them no, that's down.
Good idea.
I know an old guy that knows how about that stuff, kind of help you out.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Do you need a motion to approve the board meeting minutes of April 4th?
So moved. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Do you need a motion to approve the budget hearing minutes, April 11th?
Aye.
All favor.
Aye.
Warrant number 22, general, $129,435.11. Water, $7,383.15. Sewer, $2,407.50 totaling $139,225.66. Payroll number 23 totaling $93,140.81. So here.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
We have a bunch of transfers. Court clerk, $2,600. Court officer, $1,000. Part-time court clerks, $1,600. Equipment, $1,000. Contractual services, $700. Negotiator, $2,400. Miscellaneous, $2,700. Equipment, building equipment, $750. Contractual services, $500. Equipment repair, $250. Full-time patrolman, $14,000. Police overtime, $14,000. Lieutenant, $6,000. DWI patrol, $1,500. Telecommunicator overtime, $4,000. Police computer software, $5,000. Fire communication repair, $600. Fire, gas and oil, $600. Street overtime, $50. Miscellaneous equipment, $50. Salt, $4,000. Economic development personnel services, $4,000. Junior small renter rental, $125. Personnel services, zoning personnel services, $125. Refuge, landfill charge, $8,200. Refuge vehicle maintenance, $200. Beautification, $1,000. Compensated expenses, $5,200. In the water fund, vehicle maintenance, $150. Gas and oil, $50. Those are your transfers.
And I think, what was it saying? Computer software, I think he said 5,000.
Should be 500.
And it was 500. Was that one or the one above it?
And some of them, yes, and one. He said the video was landfill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
150 for.
Need a motion?
Aye.
Second.
All favor. If we need a motion to approve the village budget for 2223 this year, I move to approve the village budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Beckett, I have to one thing. Bill wanted to put in the resolution authorizing payment, Brian can explain it.
Yep. So when we get our national grid bills because of the timing that we get the bills and the timing of our board meetings, often time there's late fees on there. So this resolution will allow the treasurer to pay those bills that are recurring automatically and have them on the agenda for the next process board meeting.
And he found out about that at a court meeting where it is allowed.
Yeah, certain things.
He just wants us to.
How much do the late fees?
It's going into the thousands.
Yes, so.
And this is just because we can't get the meeting in before the.
So there's two pieces, there's two pieces to it. First, he, he's, he is setting up to get the bills emailed rather than physical, which is also allowed. And the last two months, I actually got the late fees reversed, but the late fees are basically negating the savings that we're getting from the solar light. So by doing all of this, we will not get the late fees anymore, and then we'll get the separate.
How much is, would we expect to save over a course of a year?
Thousands.
Like several thousand?
About, about $2,000.
You want to read it?
Yeah. The treasurer requested that the board approve a resolution authorizing a payment in advance of audit for public utility services such as gas, electric, water, sewer, and telephone charges, postage, freight, and express charges as authorized by village law SS 5-524. Such claims shall be presented for audit at the next regular meeting. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Anything I want to ask?
We, we wanted to start, we want to have approval to have, it's used to be New York State leak detection, now it's GPRS leak detection, but it's the same company, they like to have the village have, get the leak detection that we've been doing it annually and finding many breaks. It was, we also had, we were going to call them in for a break that was, we believe is next to the village office. We're not sure if it's a break or if it's just groundwater, but it's, there's always this same wet spot. And to do the leak detection for the village, it takes approximately one week and it's $9,500.
They'll do the entire village in a week.
Yeah. And they, they do it different times of the day. They go, they'll do it from like some of the streets, like when they do Broadway, they do that during the night so that it doesn't, you know, get the road traffic and stuff. And they, they, we, we have them do it every year and we, we request the same person every year because he's extremely good. And it's, we, we actually saved, last year we saved in the water what it costs to have the leak detection, finding the breaks that they found last night.
I'm like.
Beckett.
All favor.
Aye. Is this the same company? I, it's my understanding maybe somewhat off subject that they're going to do something at the high service reservoir.
Well, I was just going to bring it up.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Stop, man.
Yes. So we had looked at different, is Erica?
He's not here.
Yeah, he said he'd be there by 6:30. Anyway, so there's Atlanta underwater, Atlantic underwater services, they have sent us a proposal for $5,800 for tank cleaning and $1,800 for tank inspection. They're available Friday, the 29th, and probably will go into Saturday, the 30th. So that goes up to $7,600. And then Eric said we should add his 10% contingency on top of that just in case, which is 8360, so maybe we say up to 8,500. But they come in and with wet suits on and. They go inside the tank and they have a whole system where they have their, like they wash down so they don't contaminate the water and then if they find a leak there's some kind of.
If they find something, will they, will they end up taking it, fix it up?
Yeah.
When was the last time we had that done?
Maybe.
Three years ago we had, they once came to the camera, three or four years ago.
And torpedo?
Yeah.
Yeah, when it was done like that was in the 90s, I think, so it's been a long time. But there's a lot of sediment on the bottom, so they have to clean that out first.
Okay.
And then they feel the sea should, you know, the seams and whatever.
Did they clean up the sediment three years ago with no torpedo?
No. So that's why they want to do it this time and get a better look at it.
Okay.
This comes out of the water, don't it?
Yes. There's no objections.
I mean, do we have, is it professional services that we don't have to do?
It's under the DPW.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which goes up to 35,000, so we're, we're well within that.
That is looking for the.
And this would be the 29th, a couple days.
Yeah, it is.
Great.
So you know, I'm going to say go up to 8,500.
8,500.
For Atlantic underwater services to do the repair and cleaning and inspection of the high service. All favor.
And remember, I offered to, to go in myself, my own wet suit. That'd be fun.
You have to be qualified to go to the tank.
An alligator or something in there.
There's snakes in there, there's no time to go.
There's one in there? Oh, really? Oh, well, I take back that offer. I'll, I'll watch then.
All right, so down to underwater, underground tank.
Yeah, behind the village office, we found that there is a mold oil tank that needs to be removed. Excuse me. Eric went and sought out, excuse me, sought out getting bids for it and only one company replied back. He did it for five different companies, four or five companies, and he only got one person back and to remove, to remove the tank and redo the, recreate the ground afterwards, it's going to be $4,334.04.
Is the tank leaking?
It's not leaking, but it's, it's got to be removed.
So it's, so they used to be on oil.
They used to be on oil in the, when it was the bank.
Yeah.
They switched to gas, but they never took the tank out.
Well, that wouldn't be required. I mean, if the tanks, if there's, if there's nothing in the.
Tank will eventually degrade.
Yeah, but is, if there's nothing in the tank.
We don't, we don't know, that's a, we don't know if there is anything in the tank. And then it could, then if it doesn't, then it's going to become a, you know, hazmat.
Then it's a, yeah.
So we want to get it done before it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that.
Just so, just before you do that, Paul from EdgeCo is a company, that's a company that we use as realtors all the time, so.
I'll make a motion that we hire EdgeCo Environmental for $4,334.04 to remove the tank from behind the village. The old tank.
All favor.
All right. How much was that? I have in voice, it says $4,013.
Oh, may, that's the subtotal, so.
We wish we could ask them.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be why.
Oh.
It should be.
That's I am.
Good catch.
That's, yeah. We got a, we got a separate thing that didn't have the tax on it, must've gave you the wrong one.
Cause I'm looking at it here on, on here, yep, it's the subtotal.
I, I amend to 4,013.
Second. I did have them look at some asbestos in, I have some looking at years ago, it seemed , it seemed fine.
Alright, so next is resurfacing the pavilion, it's getting where the blacktop is creeping in certain places, especially around the poles, getting a little dangerous, so we had brought the count in, we took a look at it and they can do the work for $19,760. This will be part of our SAM graph, reversible SAM graph. So.
Can they get to it?
Well, this agreement, they have to have the work, work done by July 1st when they open the park back up. They said it'd only take a day.
Oh.
Need a motion to approve, to count in for $19,760.
As part of the SAM.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to pay it upfront there if we were.
Some move.
All favor.
Whoop, I'm trying to figure it out. So I mean, I see, I see all this, it all makes sense, okay, I get it.
Alright, now we're up to Nicole for service contract with Price House.
Jason, are you on?
Jason, James.
He's there. Jason, you're going to unmute yourself. Oh, perfect.
Alright, so what our intentions here are to actually upgrade all of the residential water meters in the village that were installed prior to 2019. So I've been working with Jason in going about doing that, since we previously upgraded to an automated radio system, this could actually get our residential meters onboard with that. And Jason, do you want to talk about the agreement at all or? No, okay. So basically, we want to enter a professional service agreement with TSL, our software, since we already have it. The system, the installation endpoints, and the financing will be intricately integrated per the village's procurement policy. We should be able to just do this instead of going out to bid for all the meters since we already standardized to through Neptune. So our contract, if you guys are the professional service agreement, if you looked at that, we would be installing, do you guys have all that? No?
Yeah, what you emailed to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know it's 65 pages long, but.
I was bored earlier.
So it would be contracting out all of the service, so our DPW wouldn't be tied up with that. They would be all the same meter type, so we would actually be able to narrow the readings. Right now, we look at it to the thousand, we can get down to the gallon once everything is on the same page, so we'll be able to get a better idea of our water loss. And just more accurate all around for that. And then Jason, what's the timeline of the install? Isn't that a year?
Uh, no, I mean, you, you know, depending on, it really comes down to buy-in, right? So it's going to be, how much can we get into your constituents' homes would be the most successful. So really having the gusto when it comes to this on what a plan would be when you get down to that final, we call it the final 20%, in this case, you're talking about 70, 80 meters, what will be done to get that done? When we do these type of contracts, we automatically have built right in to do three type of mailers. All they are is like little cards, which would be all your approval about what you would want for lingo. And then from there, it will turn into not only door hangers and it all, then it'll turn into a formal letter from the village. And that's really where the success of the completion of the project will come from. You know, what will be what you would do, like, we're doing this currently in another village and basically they just said if they don't comply within 10 days, they're making an appointment, they're going to start shutting the water off.
The best part about this too is that they have more flexible hours and they'll work till 7:30 at night, so it'll be more in tune with people's work schedules. And in, in the event where, you know, people aren't answering after, once we get, I think it was to 90 or 95% per this contract or agreement, we would, then I would, or the village involved in trying to reach out to these people and use kind of like our sources to, to make this happen. So then that way, once we're done, the DPW can just like drive around on a garbage truck and pick up readings. And that way, it's really beneficial to the residents because with this new software that we again previously got on board with, it shows you if there's outrageous consumption, like that's what they call it, outrageous consumption, or like a super low usage or something, like if maybe a meter stopped working or a home is vacant or something, it'll also notify that too. And we can read much more frequently and again, know what our water is, is doing. So it's.
What's, what's the rollout schedule? Like, are you starting in an area or older meters first or how, how do you plan?
I, I already have a list of all of the meters that have been installed, like since 2019 and sooner, so I have those off the list. I have the people who, maybe a radio already got installed on someone before 2019, so we just have to replace the meter. So I've got like all of these numbers down to an exact, there is.
A rough estimate, 800 and some odd properties.
Yeah, pretty much.
Uh, how many already have had new meters installed?
Oh, God. There is 1,086 meters in the village and I believe we are replacing a total of 880 or something like that. And we already have about 70, you know, 75, 70 radios that Dave actually installed. So we, we're making the right steps, but I mean, we've been doing this for about six, seven months and it's, it's tough getting these people to, to be able to kind of align with DPW's schedule. This way, you know, these meters have like a 20-year life expectancy kind of on them and if we go after the finance and do this project, they'll like to do a 10-year plan, They'll like to do a ten-year plan, so we still pretty much good for ten years after this.
What happens if? They go to replace the meter and the homeowner needs to do some plumbing work.
So there's.
So how does that? How do we? What do we do?
Included in this, there's non-standard installations. Um Jason, you wanna?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So there there's a couple of different levels. So basically, they have a choice and there's um everybody elects on exactly what they wanna do. But basically, if they walk in, let's say it's a ball valve, our the guys who are our install team, um we actually we sub it out to, these guys are meter install companies. Who it gets sub to. It doesn't get sub to like a um mechanical contractor or something like that. These are meter install companies, so they have the all the fittings they need for normal. Installation, so they'll have a ball valve. So let's say go in, the ball valve doesn't work. Um basically, what we can do is we can call the village in to shut the curb stop off. We don't shut curb stops because that's those we don't touch them. Um, and to shut curb stop off, if it works, we can go ahead and change the ball valve, and that can be a non-standard number one. Um and then from there on, you could do a non-standard number two, which would be, you know, freezing and changing and doing more, you know, more plumbing. And um and then you guys can take it from there. So there's, let's say if they walk in and there is no. You you guys elect not to do anything. Uh you don't get charged for that install. So if they walk in, they can't change it. You guys elect, hey, we're not gonna do a thing. The homeowner has to get the ball valve replaced and then reschedule. You don't get charged for two visits. You only get charged for the one, and we get it changed out whenever we can get it done.
So if the curb stop, for instance, doesn't. Doesn't work.
Mm-hmm.
Would 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 we then tell the homeowner, you own that and we're gonna have to have the curb stop replaced prior to installation of the meter?
You you can, yeah, if that if that's what you so choose. Um we we do have one of the options, which is line freezing. Um, the downfall of line freezing, it really is only good for plastic and copper. And then on top of that is it's the water's gotta be able to shut off. So if they have a tiny leak in the house, we wanna be able to freeze it. Um, so it would fall back to the curb stop needs to be replaced. Um, we can go to that extent as if you wanted to, but the amount of cost it would be and the it would be very difficult to do.
I think the ones that are not gonna work are the ones with galvanized lines that, you know, as soon as you freeze that, it's gonna split.
Right. Oh, you can't freeze it. We can't freeze it. We we our guys won't. We aren't gonna freeze galvanized. It's you're exactly right. It's just gonna split. It's it won't hold up. Um, so it really falls back onto the curb stop. Um and then in that instance, you do have the choice um on what you would wanna do. If you guys choose just the. Yeah, I I it there's so many variables. I I mean, you can choose to take care of it and put it into a bucket of. Fix it, figure it out and reschedule it a later date, you know? If you do have an instance where it is extreme and the curb stop doesn't work, it's gonna happen. I you know, it's. Really your choice on what you want to have done, you know? Tell homeowner, gotta get it fixed, and we can go in and put the meter in.
Jason, tell them tell them about like the pricing for those non-standard installs, because I know we already have a portion set aside for those. But I want I want the board to actually hear like how much less expensive it is for the village to take care of something like that than it would be.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah. So if you do a simple ball valve, uh so if we we go in, the curb stop works. Into ball valve, it's it's a two hundred ninety-five dollar charge. It includes the ball valve and then also obviously um changing out. So um they they charge two ninety-five for that. Um non-standard number two, which would be more of like a line freeze. Cut in and replace, that's upwards of seven hundred fifty dollars. Um, and we there is a non-standard number three, which would be a changing the curb stop, but I that one is. Astronomical price because we don't know what we're gonna find. So usually we put a very high number because we might have to run new copper all the way to the house, you know? So we typically don't put those in these contracts because it's it's too hard. You wouldn't be able to figure it out.
It'd be thousand.
Yeah, exactly. It'd be three thousand dollars and you you just you don't know what you're gonna get into. They can start digging and there's no idea, so they can never. You know, they're gonna say, alright, it's thirty-five hundred bucks and, you know, it's like to put it in like one of these contracts is near impossible. So we typically, when we're doing these. Um professional services contracts, we really stick with just, we do a ten percent of the system roughly. Um five percent of the system, technically we did five percent of the system, and we throw it in as a budgetary number where we could do it. And if you don't use it, you don't have to pay for it. So none of this is you have to pay for if you don't take advantage of it. So it's just a. We kinda put it as a line item of contingency money, so that way you. If you so choose to do something, you can.
So the total proposed pricing for this, and again, this is kind of like a higher estimate, would be four hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixteen four cents. And we would go through government capital for financing instead of bonding. Bonding ended up being. So much more money plus than getting a bond council and everything. Um, it looks like we were going for, wasn't it like four thirty-five, Jason? Four hundred thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's what you had.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was over ten annual payments costing fifty-two thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and thirty-six cents. Um which is covered by the increase in the water rates already. So this is going to save the DPW. Like two weeks of time, myself, two weeks of time, just like all in all, it's going to be. It takes me like.
Yeah.
Uh to do all the, yeah, installs. Well, I'm talking I'm talking once this is all said and done.
Oh, yeah.
That, you know, it'll be two days worth of stuff instead.
You're gonna be bored.
And you guys have enough stuff.
I've got some reports to work on.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the signing of the agreement with.
The signing of the agreement and the financing.
For four hundred thirty-five thousand, yes.
The only thing I'm concerned about is the level three. Is that not that you're saying that's not in the proposal?
Uh, we didn't put number two or number three in there. We typically, in these type of contracts, it's very difficult to do that. Um and typically what we do is we can turn it over to the DPW to handle um on those last percentage that are left at five percent. Um, you know, that you would take more or have your um homeowners have to get it done for you.
So so basically, from what the contract stated was that they're going to go and assess the situation. If they can't do it, they'll notify. Uh the village, and then the DPW, whomever, will make the decision to either handle it on their own or skip or whatever. Um and of course, that would be dependent on what you guys.
Should we? I mean, do we need to have a policy in advance to say, I mean. DPW make a recommendation and we could say homeowner, village, or fifty-fifty even?
That's not.
That's fair. It's um I I have a question. What? How how do you encourage different municipalities to? I I haven't a budget or plan for for these. I know everyone is different, but at a certain point, uh you have to have some some kind of budgeting for it. No, but I mean, not for for this, for the um the tier three ones. Is that like what Tim is talking about now, like we're. Uh whether it's ours, theirs, or fifty-fifty, like how do you how do you encourage people to plan for that?
Like what percent? What percent would be?
It's so hard because you'd have to do site evaluations to even be for me to even goss, because. You know, you have so many different types of services that are out there, you know, like we talked about. There's galvanizers, copper, there's plastic, there's probably lead services that are out there. You know, there's that's why I said it's so difficult because we just don't know what each service is, and. Manans is a pretty old village, and there's some very old spots, but there's newer spots that are probably not gonna be any bit of an issue, but. Um, you know, to budget for something like that, it it's near impossible. You know, I I would be honest. I mean, we're doing this up in another village and. You know, we're down to less than two percent left, and we haven't even teed tiered over into level two. So, you know, but it's hard to say, and I've been in really old, old, old villages too, and I haven't had any issues, so. You know, a lot of this stuff is built to last is the plus side to it. Um doing due diligence, getting out there and. Um spraying the getting the curb boxes located and found and stuff. We we'll start to know as we're going forward with this. Wh- where the lag is. So you're gonna say, okay, there's a section of town that you're already gonna probably know that is gonna give us the biggest headache. And that's usually, you asked earlier, where would we start? And that's where I would start. I would start with the most difficult constituents that you probably have. And I'd start there, getting the loud notices to them, and they start hitting third notice, you know, that type of thing. You you start looking at that, and when they're doing these. Um evaluations and they go to a curb stop, if they have to take a week to get back there to. Do the meter install, that's fine, but they can spray these curb stops, so that way they get loosened up and maybe they work, you know? Um. Cause you're gonna have somewhere you can't even find the curb stop. That's always a fun one. Um and there is the other option of freezing, you know, where that's a seven hundred fifty dollar part, you know? So. Their first percentages go, it's very, very difficult to put a percentage on it. Um. Most of the time, I have a pretty good on five percent, uh and we don't usually come anywhere near that. With these uh non-standard number one.
So where's the financial risk to the residents?
There isn't.
So the residents don't have to come out of pocket for anything?
Unless it gets unless it gets elevated to one of one of these spots where they can't get the water off, or that's when it's gonna become a problem.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a big problem.
Why?
My water service works perfectly fine right now. I have a lead pipe that goes out underneath my walkway, my concrete walkway out in front of my house.
We're not touching your service, and you have a shut-off in your house?
After the meter. What I'm saying, if you guys come to me and say, well, you your curb stop doesn't work.
We don't have to shut the curb stop off to change your water meter.
I can start the water.
You do it. You do if there's no valve before the meter.
Yes, right. I'm just saying, you come to, I mean, we're just coming out of a pandemic and you guys wanna, I'm not saying you want to, but. You all of a sudden come to Karen and I and say, hey, your curb stop doesn't work. You gotta get that fixed, and here's the timeline to do it. I have a lot to say about that.
Oh, ten years ago, I had my whole service place remain into the house and into the system. And they stole an external meter outside of my house on the wall outside. How does that affect this?
So the the way the water meters work, the register stays in the same spot that it already is, and then um but. There was kind of steps, so it sounds like you have an old analog meter, and then it has the. Transmitter, I guess you would say, on the outside of your house. There were and there was like a newer model um meter installed with a remote. Like a touchpad. But now it's a radio transmitter virtually in place of that.
This is your news after replacement meter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm all for it until it starts costing me money. Well, that's the thing that hasn't been decided. It's like, oh, I mean, do we set it at, you know, village pays, you pay fifty-fifty, et cetera? That's. That that would be part of the discussion. So if what he's saying, what I hearing, is that. Most often, that's you don't find, you run into the problem. I mean, it's. Center village with the lead pipe, you know, or whatever stuff. No.
You don't have a curb stop?
I believe I do. I don't I don't know if we're looking for a curb stop. I'm just saying, in my my personal opinion, I think people will buy into it, but the timing out of this pandemic and everything else. I would suspect you're gonna hear a lot of people that will start putting out of pocket, if they do, and they might not. That's, you know, who knows?
Now, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the agreement, it doesn't say that completion is one hundred percent. It says basically it starts, it falls on back to the DPW once we hit around like ninety-eight percent if, you know, things don't work out. It's not like we're gonna. Go after you or something like that. We can still read your meter. So if if there's some kind of issue, like really and truly, I I think the village would be more than happy to work with people, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
My definition.
Hey, hey, Nicole. I mean, you guys have already replaced about seventy-five meters, correct, to the new system?
With the radios, yes.
With the radio. How many of those have we had an issue with? So I mean, you're gonna have.
It's actually solved some of our problems because there's there's tons of homes that. That we can't get, like, there was never a meter on the outside. We always had to call the homeowners and like, sometimes they would never even pick up the phone after. Letters, red envelope letters, phone calls, like all this stuff to get in to read, so we just estimate. Um, but now, like with the radio, they can just walk right past that house and it picks up and goes into the tablet, and then I have an accurate reading, so that's why. We're actually able to pick up a lot more water, and again, it was it was so much faster. Um, you know.
Yeah, besides that, we have the leak detection, we have uh high usage um reports that can be run. Um, like you were speaking on reading time, you're going from house to house, reading, taking two to three weeks to read. You're dropping that down to probably to read the village. I I mean, similar sized village I just read was it was that there are about fourteen hundred meters. It took me eight minutes to read. Um, at to like ninety percent, so it's, you know, I I usually say a thousand per hour is what I say, so it's gonna drop her from two to three weeks down to an hour to read.
And and that's obviously why we uh one of the main reasons why would why we would be doing this. I think. Um, the the issue, what it comes down to, is what about these unexpected costs and issues in the installation and replacement. Uh process. So my I I had an interesting idea that, and I, you know, I'm not sure whether whether, you know, your company could do this, but. Does our uh DPW form in Mike Hagman have some connections or some contacts in other municipalities that have done this before? And just to get a feel for, okay, how many homes did they have issues with, and how did they handle those, and who who did what in those those cases?
Yeah, I mean, one hundred percent honest, I can provide you with all of my um reference list. Uh and you call whoever you want, and I can put a notation against the light latest tan. Um, to get, you know, and I could provide that to the whole board. I doesn't, I could do something along those lines, and you guys can call whomever you'd like.
And that would be helpful, and I'm sure that uh Mike has questions that none of us had thought of. I mean, I have a few connections through NICOM uh with, and I'm. Not a hundred percent sure if this was involved in some of the capital projects that some other um villages have done, but. Um, you know, I I will be attending a conference in a week in which I can ask, but certainly if you have some.
A very recent one that just that we just completed during the pandemic, and so in the middle of it, uh was the village of Greenwich up near Saratoga.
Yeah.
What's that?
That's Washington County, yeah.
Yeah, so we ju- we just completed that that last year um in the middle of this, and uh, you know, for the most, that was. About nine hundred meters. I do everything by how many meters there are, so you guys are about a thousand, they're about nine hundred, so very similar size, again, a a little bit older of a village. Um, you know, by all means, give a call up there and talk to them. Um, the clerk's name is James, very nice. Uh Brian's the superintendent, Brian Buell, well, deputy superintendent. Uh Leo Flynn is the superintendent, and uh. You know, you guys more than welcome to reach out to any of them and uh get their thoughts on how the whole process worked.
Okay, that's uh I I have no problem reaching out to uh some of them, and I'll I'll also find out if they'll be attending the uh. The conference next week that I can speak in person. Otherwise, I have no problem speaking with them by phone.
If if you guys need, you know, uh any contact names or numbers, by all means, and I could provide them a whole list, so you can call. Um any folks you'd want, and I could put notations about who was recently done, you know, or is in the middle of it.
You you recommended the village clerk in uh Greenwich, Jane Dowling, you said?
Jane, yeah, I why she was she's a main contact there um that we work with. Um, as far as implementation and stuff, it would be a lot to do with Brian.
Um, yeah.
And then also Leo Flynn, we've done the other one.
How much does the village, how much water does the village believe they lose in dollars?
How much does the village, how much water does the village believe they lose in dollars every year?
So there, I don't know the dollar amount because Bill, but we went from a forty four percent deficit down to nineteen. Um, and there's, it's because we've been doing the leak detection and like went through and got accurate meter sizes and things like this. Um, so now it's kind of just coming into where we'll see really where the water is going, if there is a break going forward. Um, and.
I think if you know what the gallons we have coming in versus the gallons we bill out. What's the dollar value of that? Because that's gonna tell you how much this is, this savings is gonna take to recoup the money, the cost of the project.
We were forty.
It was a forty four percent.
Forty four percent, now town nineteen, so we saved more than half.
We. I I believe.
Yeah, but what's the dollar value of that? It's $10,000.
But that's still Bill's taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Going into it, so either way.
And also.
But it's two hundred and fifty, you're recovering it in less than two years.
It's out there, because we're using, in the winter, I believe it was like a hundred and sixty seven million gallons, because we're talking, you know, percentage of that, that would be. But also, most of the meters in the village were installed in nineteen ninety two. So we're past the twenty years.
Yeah.
And the accuracy is not where it should be. I mean, we're we're going this time doing meter replacements. And I'd say seventy five percent of those, the inside meter is substantially lower than the outside meter. And because, you know. We've had to go through with previous resolutions and take the the number of um building cycles, basically it always averages out to be still minimum. But at the same time, you still, like, if we look back to the entire village, I mean, you have other type of stuff where over a month.
Eric, are you on there?
I don't think Eric is.
I'm here, Eric, yeah.
All right, did you, what what was your comment you made? Did you reference any of mine?
I just, you know, knowing on past projects where, you know, the board wants to approve sort of a a maximum upset cost. So I guess if the board was considering uh approving this contract. We should consider this extra cost that might go into it for other parts and materials that aren't included in this contract, just so we're not coming back to the board again. Multiple times during construction to uh get new authorizations.
Like a contingency?
Yeah, right. That's the word.
Yeah, so in the in here is some contingencies that I built in to the total cost. Um, there there's a line item for, like I said, the non-standard installations. We, like I said, we budgeted thirty in there. Um, so that's a decent amount. It's in there.
Eight thousand eight hundred and fifty, so everyone knows.
Exactly, yeah, so there there's that built into it. Um. And I did, you could just to cover it our counts and stuff like that, I did add to. Um, some of the radios, just that way we make sure we're covering stuff. Um, and we do have a little bit of contingency in the um. More uh project management, we usually put a little bit of contingency into that. So um, there there is money that is in there. If you guys wanna keep it higher, we can raise it up. But that and you can use this for other municipal money. So if you don't use all of this money, you can back pay the loan back off. You'd still owe that amount, or you can use it for other resources if you wanted to. You know, if you're stick using this as the water fund, you could use it for something else that would be beneficial to your contingent, your constituents. Money, so if you had like $10,000, you could do something with, like you said, changing a valve box or something.
I feel comfortable with this, a four thirty five figure, I think.
I think I have had a couple of questions.
Um, Mike McKay also has the same way, so.
You wanna go first or Mike? I had Mike's.
I I guess my question is, and it's to follow up to I think what Mike Stewart was alluding to. So my question is, if you're you're a financing of say, I I know I didn't get the numbers, it's four hundred and fifty thousand. Do you know today what your anticipated recovery time period is gonna be? But to to save the money to to make up for this $400,000 in debt?
I wish Bill Smith was here because he's the one that does the, I I only calculate the water deficit. He calculates the actual like money um aspect of it.
Yeah, Nicole, if I could just jump in for a second, so I guess. You know, the 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 change in revenue is going to be due to an improvement in meter accuracy, right? We're not, we're not necessarily conserving more water. We're 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 changing the billing accuracy. And so that that's the change of this uh this approach. I don't think anybody could have a an educated guess on how accurate the meters are collectively now. And then going to, you know, a fully accurate meter, you know, what what that uh increase in revenue is gonna be.
Right.
In addition, you're gonna have uh, you know, more efficient use of staff, resource time.
Correct.
So.
But what if there isn't an increase in the efficiency of the readings?
That's.
You're looking at thirty year old meters that lose their calculation over time. I don't know how there couldn't be a change in the.
Just in the last few months, we've we've already done some some uh corrections, you know, for customers on incorrect billings. You know, just over the last few months.
And those come up all the time, so. And that's why we've ended up replacing all of these these meters, the seventy five that we've we've done. They're because of things like that, it's not because we just wanna replace the meter at eight roofs of drive.
And we also did, what, two years ago, I guess, when we did the commercial ones that are over a certain age, that's not matters. But that's where we started. I do have a question.
I do have um a question. In the term, this is a four-year term that's automatically renewed with a six-month cancellation.
Can you hear her?
Jay, do you hear that? You're muted.
Sorry, um, I couldn't quite hear her. No, I'm sorry.
Four-year term with an automatic renewal with a six-month cancellation?
Are you talking about the financing part of it?
No.
Page twelve.
Page twelve with a contract.
I'm sorry, I mean, I'd have to pull up the contract. I don't have it. Uh, memorize off my head here. Give me one second here, I can pull it up. Um, could you, what page would you say it was?
Page twelve.
Twelve, okay. Give me one second here.
All right, while you're doing that, Mike McKay raises his hand again.
Yeah, I mean, I know, yeah, I don't I don't want to be a pain, but my, I guess my question is, you you know what it is, the issue is today with the loss, with the loss of water? And then you're going to go into debt for four hundred plus thousand dollars. If there has to be in my mind, some projection that says this is when I'm ready to cover this money. I mean, to just walk into it and say, I I hope we will, or we're going to save, I mean, I appreciate saving staff time, I get it. But to go into debt for this amount of money and not know the answer to those questions is uh is is just troubling for me.
Well, I think because of the questions and then that's wanting to talk to people at Nikon, I think we have another meeting next Monday. So I think we table this um, you know, tonight and have Bill here to answer some of these questions.
And I'll hopefully have some answers as well. I'm contacting the village clerk at the village of Greenwich as we speak. So I just uh started an email and um uh if people have questions that they would like me to ask her. Um, just email them to me and I'll compile it all into one email.
I I would just be interested to know with like what percentage of issues in total for the nine hundred meters did they run into? And what policy did they put into place as far as? What, you know, who paid?
Yes.
You know, for the cost, et cetera, and and what were the, you know, circumstances, et cetera, like, for example, would be.
Absolutely. That's and that's what I was planning to ask, so I I definitely will. And if you think of, if there's anything else that you think of, just let me know, I'll send it.
Thank you.
Can I have any question? What are the impact when you discover that a house is over seventy five years old? Service from the main to the house is lead.
That's my house. I know it's lead.
Most of them, most of our houses.
All south, all old houses.
You haven't thought about replacing that?
Uh, it's so calcified inside there. I'm not worried about lead poisoning. Yeah, told him somewhere. We tested every once in a while.
Can you still use the lead pipe once you discover that it's lead?
Well, you're just replacing the the meter to. To whatever's, whatever.
It's going to the wall joint, okay? Corrosion. That's all left.
Yeah.
What are you doing now?
You can leave it alone.
Right, yeah, yeah, don't disturb it.
That's why.
I mean, this, Jason mentioned this, it it's, you know, we wanna get everybody out to the radio meters, but it's it's not gonna be a mandate. And there could be a choice made by the DPW, as I I believe, mentioned, no determination.
That's why I replaced my whole system.
So.
Uh, Mike McKay raises his hand again. Mike, go ahead.
I I promised my last question. Uh, when you out and talk with the folks in Greenwich or other villages, could you ask the question that I asked regards to of their experiences recouping these these dollars? Over what timeframe that occurred for them?
Yes, yeah, and I it'll be interesting to see whether, especially in Greenwich, if how much they realized already. But uh, we may be able to get some more municipalities as well that have done it in different time periods. So we can uh, we can definitely find that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's important that you have a policy in place before you start this.
Nicole, isn't it also possible that the meter could error? And, you know, like it would, like we've seen, we want a refunding to the customers. Due to errors in the meters.
Yes.
So this.
That was more the billing, like it was billed and hundreds versus thousands.
Well, there's there's been cases where the readings have been wrong too. And like you, so with the analog ones, I've had it where I've had so many re-reads because people are reading the the like dials on it. And maybe like the cover shifted a little bit, so they're reading the top of, you know, the the actual number instead of really what it is. And that's just like astronomically different consumption too. And if I'm sending the guys out there for re-reads and they're telling me the same exact number, but like two higher, then what am I to do? With this, I've already done all the billing system legwork. Um, anything else that, at least for those seventy five regulars that we already installed, um, any errors that. Were part of that were already caught because ultimately now, even all those old meters, I still have a billing system set up where all I'd have to do is enter the radio tag. And then it would pick it up. Um, and the guys like the the DPW would not have to enter anything in manually. So it takes human error out one hundred percent too. So it just, there would be a lot less resolutions unless, you know, I mean, I can't even think of an instance where there would have to be one. Unless, you know, I entered a digit wrong in the radio.
Jason, were you able to pull up the contacts?
Sorry, I was, yeah, I I was able to pull that up. And to be one hundred percent honest, I I do not have an answer. I don't. Um, it's kind of confusing to me why there's a four-year initial term on here. It usually is only a one year. So I'm not sure why um my contracts guy wrote a four-year, but it does say for media reading equipment. Is where the terms are coming into play. Um, you know, typically we don't do a four-year term on this size of a project. Um, this, that might have been an oversight from a larger project that would have been a four-year term. So I I wouldn't think for a thousand meters, we'd need four years to do the project. I I don't really think we need much more than four months, six months, so.
So you'll, will you have them look into that for us?
I I am, yeah, I I tried messaging him to ask him why he left it four years. Um, and I I so, but I have not heard a response, so I apologize for that. I don't know why it says four years. Usually I wouldn't say more than a year is typical for this.
People A has the hand raised.
Yeah, but I will have to get adjusted. Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Um, yes, I was just uh listening and and I heard Tim say that this wasn't going to be a mandate. So does that allude to the resident has a choice of keeping what's not broken in their current home?
DP DPW is is gonna make a recommendation and I guess we'll we'll have to, you know, discuss how we're gonna approach these. Uh, but uh, from what we're told, we, you know. If the homeowner has a big issue, they don't wanna pay out of pocket, we don't, and we don't have a policy in place that that we can resolve depending on what the issue is. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it right now. I don't know about the rest of the board.
We'll need to have a policy.
Need to have a policy.
In way or the other.
Yeah.
And I think the goal is to replace all the meters, right? So there isn't really the option of that replacement.
Unless, I mean.
So if somebody says.
Well, we have to decide. This is our product, so are we gonna pay for it, which I think we should? Or are we gonna push it out to the homeowners? Or people may think that's the best way to go. Personally, I don't think so, but that's what we'll have to decide.
So that, so then it would be a mandate. Which which I think I'm going, you know, speaking uh in tone of the of the two mics that have already spoken. Um, you know, you're putting a lot of risk on the homeowner having to delve out of pocket for something you're mandating. I think that that needs to be considered in this project. To take the responsibility to the village. If the village is mandating this has to be fixed or changed. Then they need to assume the majority, if not all, of the costs. Um, but I also agree with uh Mike McKay wondering, how long are we gonna? Have or take to recoup from these savings?
Well, I would say an 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 operational curb stop is a requirement.
I understand, but if a curb stop hasn't been utilized in in a long period of time, there's a good chance that it's gonna stick. And it may not function properly.
And you can shut it off now because. You have a a a on the other side of the meter. It's just, it's where you can a hundred percent know if you're shutting it off, it's not on the right side of the meter in order to swap the meter out. Now, they can, they could put a ball valve on if even if, even if the curb stop shuts down, you know, a majority of it. I mean, it's not saying that you can't, you know, I mean, swap it out quick. I mean, somebody who's good can do that.
But you're saying that it's in the code that the homeowner is required to have an operational curb stop.
In our code? Currently, are you saying?
Yeah.
I agree for the crew curb stop, yes, okay.
The homeowner owns the curb stop.
Oh, I understand who owns it. I'm, my argument would be who gets to decide when it needs to be replaced. And again, I'm not against this project.
Right.
And, but, I don't think you can say it's it's a requirement that you have an operational curb stop. My point.
I don't see why in the, and we'll look into.
I'm not disagreeing that it's the best idea.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, show me where it says that that's my issue, that's a mandate, that I have to have that operation. It comes from.
The reason I would think it would have to be in the code is if you do have an emergency and DPW had to be dispatched in order to shut your water off so that your house didn't flood. If you don't have an operational curb stop, how is that gonna happen? They're gonna shut down, they're gonna shut down, for instance, the 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 entire street?
Well, I'll give you an example. When I had to replace my water line and my curb stop. And they had to shut off the main to the road so that they could put a new saddle on the main to do this. They couldn't shut off the main to the road because the shut off for the main to the road didn't function. So that's kind of similar to what we're saying as a resident, is how often do you even check your main shut offs? We obviously don't check our curb stops. I don't have a wrench to to turn my curb stop, even though I own the curb stop. And I know the village doesn't maintenance, do routine maintenance on people's curb stops. And any valve that isn't turned and used is gonna dry out over time and or freeze up and not close. So there's a, there's a big risk that there's a ton of curb stops in this village that aren't going to function. And you're gonna find that out when you need to, because you wanna change this meter and then say. Well, we don't really have a policy in place, but the homeowner's gotta, you gotta dig up your yard and fix that.
Well, you're taking a lot of a lot of assumptions. I mean, first of all, the curb stop has to not work. Then the then the homeowner has to not have uh the meter isolated on either side and those don't work. I mean, that, I think you're talking about a very. And those don't work. I mean, I think you're talking about a very, very small percentage of these types of circumstances.
I I I can agree with you there, but I'm just going to, I'm just using my example. The year after I bought my house, I was told that I had a leak and I had to change my water supply from the main to my house. And when they tried to shut off the main to allow the workers I hired to do it, they couldn't shut off the main. We had, they had to flush two hydrants to drop the pressure in the main so we could finish the job. So that's, I'm just giving you one example, and that example could multiply throughout the village. I'm just asking you to take consideration of that when you're making a mandate on residents. That's all I'm asking.
All right, well, we're going to table this, get some more answers, have Bill here next week, he'll give us an update on the other stuff and then we'll maybe we won't decide, maybe we will next week and we can have a discussion.
And for everybody who's asked questions or voiced concerns, I'm already putting those into uh, questions for the village clerk, so please know that you're that we're, we're listening and uh, hopefully responding appropriately to all all concerns.
All right, anybody else have anything before we move on?
Thank you.
Um, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. All right, we have a couple of things for the fire companies for some of the people's services. Um, while we're elected to active membership in the company here. What?
Is that what you want to go into executive session about? This would be accepted.
Those three?
These are just new members.
Okay.
As those three?
Mm-hmm.
All right, why don't we table that part of it? And then we need to approve um, the officers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year Chief David Ogden, First Assistant Chief Mike Stewart, Second Assistant Chief Harvey Bender, Captain Colin Schatz, Captain Robert Griffith, Lieutenant Nick Siers, Lieutenant Sherry Archibald, Lieutenant T.J. Robertson, Fire Fleet Captain Doc Schatz, and Fire Fleet Lieutenant Paul Beadham.
I move to approve the uh, for said uh, officers for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
All favor?
All right.
And we will come back to the other part.
Can you, can I also ask permission to use the uh, fire truck in the Little League parade this Saturday and possibly do Memorial Day parade in City Water?
Did we already do the Water League one? I don't know. Maybe not.
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Second?
All favor?
All right. Thank you.
Little League and Memorial, Mike?
Yeah.
Approval of both staff of the fire department? You need to leave that hall. This form is to be signed by the mayor of the village demands after the twenty twenty-one firefighter records list that has been posted for at least thirty days as certified by the completion of the twenty twenty-one fire department twenty thirty.
That's completed or is that? That's already been done?
The thirty days is already been.
Yeah.
So we just need motion to approve and then there's we all have to sign it once you approve it.
Come on.
All favor?
All right.
Well, Don, you want to?
Yeah.
Do the emergency plan?
Um, the mayor, um, the chief of police, Mike Stewart, Dave Ogden, Mike Hagman and myself, we had a meeting to go over changes for the twenty twenty-two emergency plan. Um, the changes were that we named the mayor at the public information officer that the operations center is going to be inside the police department rather than the firehouse. We've updated the map for, that will be for Dutch Village. We've added to the severe weather, the police drone unit. And we've added a telephone number in the for the reverse nine-one-one to the sheriff's department. We've added to the water emergencies, a boil and water policy. And we removed all the names that were in there, we put it in with the titles. The only thing we didn't do, get done yet, and we're going to, this will come back later, is we're working with Homeland Security on a cybersecurity policy. So I need approval to make these changes.
Second? Second?
All right. Yeah, maybe, or John, put a copy of the resolution in with the book.
Yeah.
Is Isabel on?
Isabel's on. All right, Isabel, you're up.
Can everyone see my screen?
Not yet. I got the unpin the.
Okay. Is it, uh?
Give me one second, Isabel.
Last one.
That's the volume. Yeah, I did.
Can you click through this thing?
Wait a minute.
There you go.
All right. Isabel, you might have to re-present it.
Okay.
It's off now.
Perfect. Um, gee, this is my bi-weekly um, economic development intern update. So I'm going to be talking about the CGI digital project, the food truck festival in the historic signage idea. So um, on April fifteenth, CGI came with the videographer and they got all of the footage they needed for the videos. And thank you to everyone who sent photos and videos. CGI was very appreciative. And we actually got the first cut of the videos today, so I'm going to stop showing this screen and I'm going to show the two videos.
Welcome to the village of Manans, New York, a refreshing change of pace from the hustle and bustle of the greater capital district which surrounds it. While small in size, our strong community spirit and family-focused amenities make it a place of happily-qual home for a lifetime.
Covering about three square miles with a population of some four thousand residents, the village of Manans is part of the town of Colony, adjacent to the state capital of Albany and set along the west bank of the Hudson River. Incorporated in nineteen twenty-four, the village takes its name from a French immigrant with a passion for nature's greenery.
The village of Manans traces its history back as early as sixteen oh nine. We were at the center of the manor of Renselirzwick. In the eighteen forties, the early eighteen forties, Louis Manan came to this area and established his horticultural shops on the Manan Road, or what would become the Manan Road. In nineteen twenty-four, the village incorporated under the name of Manans. And we'll be celebrating our one hundredth anniversary here in twenty twenty-four.
Today, Ganser Smith Memorial Park is a principal venue for village events and the flagship of its system of parklands, biking and walking trails. The historic Albany Rural Cemetery in Manans has the distinction of being the resting place of Chester A. Arthur, the twenty-first president of the United States. President Arthur grew up in the capital region. The village of Manans government is committed to being responsive to the needs of residents, including a village police department, volunteer fire department, and a department of public works, which provides trash and recycling pickup. The Manans Public Library offers an extensive array of resources, services, and programs. Manans Union Free School District serves approximately three hundred students, offering an excellent education from kindergarten through eighth grade. Along with its paid public service, Manans stands out for the efforts of its village volunteers from the fire department and fire auxiliary to the parent teacher association, the village parks beautification committee, and the St. Patrick's Club.
A charming place to live for the individual efforts of residents on making a difference throughout the community. Welcome to the village of Manans, New York, the urban suburban village.
So that was the first welcome video, and then the second video is focused on quality of life.
Local residents have the unique pleasure of enjoying all the big city amenities and employment opportunities of the Albany area. While taking comfort in knowing they have the village of Manans to come home to. Your choice here includes large, single-family homes on larger lots with plenty of trees all around, charming starter family homes, newer construction options, including single and multifamily units, apartments, and spacious loft conversions. For recreation and exercise, many residents like nothing more than a simple stretch of the leg. You'll see the mountain about pedaling along the Mohawk Hudson bike path, walking in village parks, or hiking on sage estates preserve.
Centrally located, we have about four miles of trails. And you can use it all season, all seasons. Um, in the fall, it's beautiful. In the winter, you can do it with snowshoes or skis. In the spring, it may be a little muddy, but that's okay. Um, and the summer is absolutely perfect.
Other than exercising outdoors, Manans residents also spend time at village-sponsored events such as summer concerts and movies in the park, the village community picnic, other seasonal events. Classes been in session at the Manans Union Free School District for more than one hundred forty years. With the average of thirty-six students attending per grade, kindergarten to eighth grade classes, students benefit from smaller class sizes, close and personalized support they receive from faculty and staff.
Manans is a unique K-eight school and district with a dedicated staff serving a diverse student population of just over three hundred students. We are dedicated to both academics, including Spanish instruction as early as kindergarten, a commitment to the arts, both visual and performing. Also, we have robust after-school opportunities for our students year-round, ranging from athletics to STEM clubs to our much appreciated drama club with our annual drama production.
For post-secondary education, close-to-home choices include Hudson Valley Community College, private colleges, and a public university, all within a ten-mile radius. To ensure public safety, village leaders continue to invest in its police department, protecting life and property within the boundaries of the village. The department has its own communication and operates twenty-four seven. We are a very community service-oriented department and do many events throughout the year like concerts in the park, coffee with the cops, and the village community night, and even few. We're also involved with Manans School and officers are there every day to greet kids as they get off the bus in the morning. Here in Manans, we try to stay cutting-edge when it comes to technology with computers, play laterhand cameras, and everything. We also have a drone unit with three pilots having their FAA certification flyby. We're proud of the village of Manans and the residents that live there. With its tree-lined parks and neighborhoods, historic places, mainstay local businesses, favorite restaurants, and community events, the village of Manans is beloved by residents who wouldn't choose to live anywhere else.
So those are the um, first two um, versions of the welcome video and the quality of life video. So we can um, provide edits to CGI, but I think the consensus from what the people I've showed it to is they really like it the way it is. Um, did, unless any of you saw any glaring issues that we may have missed. But I thought that the videographer and the editor did a really good job of highlighting that, everything that we wanted Manans to look like.
They were nice.
Good job.
Yeah. Excellent job.
I'll vouch for, there, there was not a lag uh, when uh, when I watched this at home, so I think some of that uh,
That's, that's looping back and forth.
Yeah. When on my screen, it looked good, um, but I went, changed to Google me, I could tell that there was definitely a little bit of a lag.
Share that with the, with board members to to view on their own as well.
So, yeah, they also do, um, they're going to send everything to us in order to be able to post it on the website and Facebook and everything. We just have to basically send our stamp of approval first. So that should hopefully be up within like the next couple of weeks. Um, and then for the food truck festival, I've worked on developing um, a map just so on the day of, there's a little more organization for all of the vendors. And unfortunately, one of the food trucks uh, did email to say that they could no longer participate. But we should still have five to six food truck vendors per day, including one dessert vendor every single day. And then for the historic signage idea, um, I'm still looking for grant and funding opportunities. And I'm working with Kevin to find a way to connect it to the hundredth anniversary of the village because you know that that's coming up. And um, I also met with um, someone from La Bella and Sean, who uh, is in charge of the website to make sure that we could link like a physical location to an online presence. And both were on board with the idea, so while it might take a little while, um, it seems that everyone's really interested in it and it should be a great um, investment into documenting the history of the village. That's it from me.
Thank you, Isabel. Thank you. Lots of uh, lots of great things that have come in the past few weeks and uh, uh, I know that Isabel was here uh, for the full day with the videographer as uh, as I, and I think that was probably a good ten-hour day, but um, but he was very thankful that he got to see all of the things that make Manans what it is, so that uh, oftentimes municipalities just say, oh, visit this, this, and this, and it's up to them to find them. I think this, um, a lot of the footage was as good as it was because of all of the the contributions. So thank you to everyone who did that. Thank you to Isabel for helping to coordinate all of that.
John and I attended the uh, installation dinner on Saturday night in Nicole. Um, it was a great event. Food was excellent. All planned out. All enjoyed it. Does anybody have anything?
I apologize because I never received the invitation for it, so I didn't not acknowledge, I just never received it. I don't want to appear rude. I didn't actually know any board members were invited besides Meg, honestly. I just wanted to stay as guests.
I, before the pandemic, I was a regular at those, uh, I missed my table from that. We we always have a good time, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're going outside of my uh, vacation, so.
Missed some delicious food, but it's like so good compared to, I feel like. We did some? Was it the same? Yeah.
Yeah, it was really good.
It was like.
It was the first time.
Can I fall asleep there for a second?
I will be there next year, uh, so I look forward to it.
Uh, the village has been using NextApp for some solar savings uh, on our energy bills. It has been a nightmare, um, largely because of the way that they bill. They invoice us for the ninety percent of the credit we receive. Uh, there's a new company that's called Melnet that Meg found out about and I had a conversation with that actually it's the same thing, only the bill is, it's one bill, one national grid. There's no additional invoice. They think that they our allocations for the capacity were not appropriate, so our savings should be many thousands instead of just a few thousand. Um, and it also gets us grant credits, I guess, with my certa because they work with my certa and um, it gives us other opportunities.
Good.
It doesn't cost us anything.
So we can get out of the other?
Yes, yeah, I already told them that that we were looking to go elsewhere.
So we just have to give them like a what, a thirty-day notice or something?
Um, yeah, and as soon as we tell them that we're done. Uh, yeah, and as soon as we tell them that we're done, um, um, the only credits would, would be billed for the ones that we already received, but they're just waiting to apply. So I would like approval to terminate our arrangement with Next amp and go with this new company, uh, Melnet.
Do we have some, uh, materials from them to look at?
Uh, so the link, did we put the, ever put that in the, in the, uh, newsletter, remember? I think we talked about it, but we never did for the community.
Sheila's your girl.
I'm gonna put the Melnet web address in the newsletter.
Are you what's gonna happen?
I don't think it happened yet, but that's what I think we were gonna do. It will provide everyone with information.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that. I know it's some, uh, I, I have no, um, what do you call it? I, I've had no, uh, interactions or, um, any information on, on them yet, so I, I, I have no idea. I just want to make sure. I know I've had some friends bitten by some of these companies, not them.
It's not, it's not an energy contract. It's, uh, it's simply, uh, whatever National Grid charge, charges, you save ten percent wherever. Not like you're locking in a rate or anything like that. It's just, it's just a saving. And the, the, the solar farms that basically the energy comes from are local farms. So, yeah, I'll get everybody some, some information on, and.
Thanks.
And we could table that till next meeting?
Sure.
All right, if anyone has anything else, we have one personnel matter for executive session.
I make a motion to go to executive session?
All favor. Aye.
Aye. Good night.
All right, take care, Bill.
Well, of course, I can't promise anything. She doesn't get in the action for me to sit in the rear, but if I hear. I hope you do. I've done before with those steel high voltage. Remember that? You were on the village board during twenty. Good luck to you. Thanks. All right. I promise I'll let you know. I should be, but, but again, I can't make no promise. I've done the best that I could so far. That's why I need to go see the governor.